Okay, if anyone's here regarding Gordon State Harvest LLC, they have post public till September. So they will not be arguing with the C.
They sent a letter requesting post moment fill out the September 3rd meetings. They requested that they not be required to notice that they announced it would be made tonight. They would defer September 3rd and that they would not have to notice again.
I'd like to make the most they have to know.
Yes.
Second, I'm motion fee. Okay, they go on favor.
I don't have here.
Those. That's okay, so Gordon State Harvest will send out their public notices to everybody within the 200 feet for next month.
But well, whenever they come in, yes, I want to.
Well, whenever they come in.
Yeah.
So yeah, please. Okay, that's what we're just being good. So bring your book and go through.
Yeah, they should.
Motion to go by Dennis Fadier.
It's actually saying.
Why, Justin, please see all the favor. Aye aye, opposed, aye and fay. Okay, first one I'd add tonight, that is ARCR Properties, spelled L S D. White, uh, hurry in court.
Yes. Living, everybody.
It's called familiar.
Been here fairly recently. Just get some moments set up.
Sure. Looks really muddy and decent one in.
Sure. Kyle, Kyle Denny, uh, uh, look, retired. What's your company?
Not test way you're about to get.
I do. Kyle Denny, heel box 120 Franklinville, New Jersey. Oh, yeah, three.
And you're also an Italian.
Yes, yes, he's a professional, yes, who will.
Any other professional?
No, we also have Ryan Clark of ARCR Properties with the applicant.
Yes. Grand Aunt, please, turn Delphi, that's actually where you get.
I do.
Name and address, who's where?
Uh, Ryan Clark, 2001 College Drive, Suite 19, Clementon, New Jersey, year eight, year two one.
So officially now there's only four members that can have a notice.
I, I was, I noticed.
Unique three of them, but. Then broke.
Understood, understood. And we were about to have that discussion, but we thought we had some time with the, uh, the prior application to make that decision.
So, I mean, you have to, I guess, the, the options to, well, you could suspend the review.
Thank you. If you indulge me for one minute, if I can talk for a bit. We'd like to proceed.
You've been proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I think the remainder of the board can make a fair, a fair decision with respect to the application. So, good evening, my name is Scott Good, I'm an attorney with the law firm Cooper Levinson. I'm here representing the applicant, uh, ARCR Properties LLC. Um, ARCR Properties seeks a variance relief for minimum lot frontage at, uh, it's, we're calling it Zero Main Road, it's also known as Block 5702, Lot 55 on the tax map of Franklin Township. The property is a vacant lot, um, but it's also a flag shaped lot. With our application, we're proposing to construct a one single family home on the parcel. The property is located in the RA Residential Agricultural Zoning District, where a single family residential dwelling is of permitted use. So, as I mentioned, we have two witnesses tonight. I'd first like to start with Ryan Clark of ARCR Properties, so that he can, um, talk to the board about the proposed development. So, Mr. Clark, can you tell the board of what your position is, ARCR?
Project manager.
Okay. Can you describe the proposed, uh, development?
Sure. It's a single family house, as you mentioned, 2,900 square feet, one and a half stories, three bed, three bath.
Go ahead. Will the property be serviced by a septic and well or any public utilities?
It's well and septic.
Well and septic. So, we've discussed that it's a flag shaped lot. How are you proposing to access the property?
Ten foot driveway down the long side. And it's.
Ladder placed.
Sure, ten foot driveway, it's currently going up along the side of the property.
All right. Um, is there any other means of accessing the property?
Yes, there's actually a 50 foot wide easement for the right of way.
Okay, so why are you proposing to use the 10 foot driveway instead of using the access easement?
Cause the 50 foot right of way easement is somebody's property that's being used. So, we're trying to get a neighbor and not cut the driveway through their property.
Can they use that key? Do they mark the easement?
It can't be done.
Please, you go ahead and just mean, if I don't speak, please.
Theoretically, it could be if it's the access and utility easement. I, I, I didn't do deed, do the deed research to find out, but it's called out as an access specifically, an access and utility easement.
So I'll just, I, I, I'll advise the board that there was pre, a prior subdivision application several, several years ago, I believe in about two, 2010 or 2011. And this, that easement, well, it was approved subdivision for, I believe, three properties. That easement was created for that subdivision, but it was since abandoned and, um, my clients, my client does not want, want to, I guess, build, propose to build multiple properties back there. We thought it's better suited for a single family property, um, given that it is a flag lot and there, there is, there, there's other properties that would be around it. And with the proposed lot as it is, there would be a significant amount of setbacks, both front, rear and side, um, to accommodate any privacy concerns.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Mr. Clark, did you, did you send any, did we send any notices to the neighbors, to see if we can address the, the nonconformity issue with respect to lot frontage?
Yeah, uh, we sent certified and regular mail to lots 53, 54, 5401 and 5402. The certified mail was unclaimed and none of the regular copies were returned.
Okay, based on your experience, aside from the lot frontage, can you satisfy the other bulk standards, that the Franklin Township has established?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Next, I'd like to speak to Mr. Danny. Mr. Danny, could you provide some qualifications for the board?
Uh, I was previously qualified by this board.
Oh.
Yeah, to me.
Multiple times.
We, we did hollow true as a better.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're, Mr. Danny's recognized as a professional.
Yeah.
Professional engineer, professional light server. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Danny, now you, now you've been recognized as a professional, can you, can you describe the existing conditions of the property?
Yes, it's a 12 and change lot that has an existing 10 foot frontage along Main Road. Additionally, it backs up to numerous lots that were part of a previous subdivision that were approved in 1998.
Okay, have you done any analysis of the proposed development with respect to the bulk standards?
Yes, it substantially meets all requirements except for the lot frontage.
Now, have you reviewed the, uh, review letter from the board engineer?
Yes.
Do you feel that the, do you feel that the ARCR can satisfy the conditions that were set forth by the, in the engineer's letter?
Yeah, yes, I believe the one outstanding comment was regards to the driveway. The proposed construction is by two minutes with a dense grating aggregate sub base, which is adequate to support emergency vehicles.
Okay, so, last question, as, as I would look along with Ford's yard. Would the drive, what properties, would there be any significant impact to using this driveway to the surrounding blocks?
So the properties to the south are all wooded and a front on the adjacent roadway. And the property to the north, which is 5402, has a six foot high stock gate fence along the property line.
So, in your opinion, do you, do you believe that there would be any significant impact?
No, there does not appear to be significant impact to those adjacent properties.
Was that right? Uh, Mr. Danny, with respect to the, the variance analysis, have you, do you, in your opinion, do you believe that, um, ARCR has satisfied the burdens of establishing of four variants under C1?
So with respect to the C1 hardship, there was no room to acquire additional property, since there is, um, you know, adjacent properties that are developed on both sides. Reduction would, you know, substantially impact the zoning plan. That would be if we reduce the adjacent properties. And also, we had requested the neighbors of purchasing the adjacent properties and they had denied it, so there's no room to expand.
Okay. What about under the, the C2 standard for hardships?
So with C2, there's just no substantial detriment to the public good, and it does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan ordinance. So with respect to Franklinville, uh, flag lots are common. There was one previously approved on Sheridan Ave, um, as we, um, supported for the same applicant. Additionally, um, with the C2 Alpha criteria, the appropriate use and development of lands is a tent of the municipal land use law, which a vacant land sitting there is not being substantially, uh, appropriately used and developed. Also, the property is so large that it greatly meets the requirements, so we are meeting E criteria for population densities and the G criteria for sufficient space.
In, in your opinion, can the variance be granted, uh, can the variance be granted without substantial detriments or hardships to the, to the public?
Yes.
All right. For the reasons that you just mentioned, or for others?
Yes.
All right, and, um, would the benefits of deviating from the zoning ordinance outweigh the detriment, in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. Without variance relief, um, can this property, um, meet the standards required by the ordinance?
No, because the adjacent properties are developed, there's no room to expand it, and this lot was the result of a subdivision that was approved in 1998.
All right.
It was approved in 1990, but there was discussion during that meeting about if they did something with that lot back there, that they perhaps went back for a reef. Something is what they said. Mr. Vanegar, I think said, wanted to, that was, I said. And they chose not to. Why this ever got approved is beyond me.
I said, two questions, this, this access easement is sort of cloudy right now, so the 50 foot wide access easement is called out by.
Can you adjust your microphone? Sorry, thank you.
The 50 foot wide access easement is called out in the plan by the open page.
Yes.
So it does exist.
It does, correct.
So, um, I don't know how we reconcile that that does exist, I don't know what is on that right now.
That's been, so I believe the, the, the prior owner, family members of the prior owner of our property are living there, they're using it, I believe it's fenced in, um, and it's been, being used as a yard space. And we felt it was more appropriate to not be a, a difficult neighbor and say, we want to utilize the easement. We're trying to, to deter, we wanted to proceed in the less, least invasive manner.
So it's, it's, it's still there, it's just you're trying to pick and choose.
It is a recorded easement, but it was also recorded with respect to the prior subdivision, which, which proposed housing behind there, uh, immediately behind those lots. And I, I believe that there was, there may have been some county requirements for, because of being on Main Road, at being a county rate. So there, there, there are some, with respect to what was proposed then, I can't really speak to specifically, but right now, we, we just, my client wants to build one property, one house, and we're trying to do that in, like I said, the least invasive way possible.
What Mr. Greaver is referring to, when you actually get our hands on the minutes of that 1998 meeting, actually not until like, what, four o'clock this afternoon. So there was some discussion at that meeting about the fact that, um, they were choosing to create this lot with 10 feet, but that, um, in the future, they would have to find a way to get more land, get more frontage if they were gonna.
But I believe that 1998 subdivision was a combination of 54, 54.01 and 50.04.02. And, and those were, it was an undeveloped property at that point. And, and so, again, I can't speak to, really speak to what happened in 1998 because I, I wasn't even in law school yet, um, but it's.
That.
But this is, I mean, I, I think that we're proposing an option that, you know, allows unused space to be used and used effectively, and we're trying to do so with minimal impact on the neighborhood.
So I want to clarify what we do have as more information, son.
But that's important, for that little narrow strip, for entibus that line is, that's, I mean, I, I think that's a safety area.
This is, yes.
Then, like, you know, Danny can speak better on that than I can, but to get fire trucks in neighborhoods back there, that, that one.
Best.
That's a problem, and that's a liability. Well, like I said.
Well, Mr. Greaver, I just want to point out that, I mean, our, our expert did testify that he believed that it falls within the standards of get, of having emergency vehicles traverse that area.
Now, excuse me, talking about the road, the road base, trees is fine, right? Driving fire truck on that road base, but two of my fire trucks are 10 foot four wide. So, we'll be hanging over, and I'm sure nobody's gonna trim those trees so we can get back there.
Would that be an option, to, to have a trim maintenance? Because that is 10 foot of property.
Don't be on too many of the crockers.
There is actually, between the two subdivisions, there's actually a gap of 0.8 feet. So the rear line of those properties on the development to our south.
48 feet.
Point, point, and so it's 10, it's 10.8, and 10.33 is 10 feet 4 inches, so.
You're talking inches.
Um, I'm just presenting the facts, I understand your position and, you know, you have to represent the community, and I'm a resident of Franklinville myself, my kids go to the schools here. So, I, I completely understand your positions and, like I said, I'm, I'm just presenting the facts with what we have on the plan.
And we, unfortunately.
You know, they're, they're going in there fast, they're save people and save homes, you know, they need more money.
What happens when you get one back there and another with the two back there? Then they're a couple.
That existing 50 foot access easement could be utilized to, we don't necessarily have to put the driveway through there and have the residential cars coming through there all the time, but that could be the means for residential, or for emergency access coming in. Because that's a 50 foot wide access easement that, if you're coming in, a site triangle is not of an issue. So what had happened with the previous application, all that mature edge road that blocks that residential property to Main Road would have to be cut down because of site triangle issues.
How is required upon that I know going the grave case for the white?
They're gonna go where the.
I put a tree, a tree. To drive Chris, Alston. Tensim, it's the.
I'm saying, yeah, I, I did a report dated May 13, 2024, which we reviewed the, uh, items that were submitted to us for, for this evening. So, as stated previously, this is a 12.26 acre lot, they're only required to have 1.5 acres. So they're, you're substantially oversized. However, conversely, they're required to have 150 feet of street frontage, and they only have 10 feet. That's the variance that's being requested tonight. All the setbacks are far exceeded, front, side and rear. So it meets all the criteria for the zone, except for that street frontage, and that's where we're getting stuck with that decision. That's section 253, 107B, paragraph 3, that they're asking for the relief on for street frontage. I had asked about, uh, attempts to make additional purchases, we heard that that was unsuccessful. Uh, my paragraph 4 expresses that same concern you're talking about, for emergency vehicles. So the driveway is supposed to be eight feet wide through a 10 foot wide flag for this lot. We have concerns about that. It's 970 feet long, there's no turnaround, how do we safely access this site? And that, that's really the crux of the matter for this evening, I think. Uh, also, if this is approved, it's subject to a finalized grading plan by the municipal engineer of the township. Question, do you, did you get fire department approval for this at all, in support of this? Okay. So, really, that, that's where we're stuck. Lot frontage, 150 feet required, 10 foot proposed, how do we access it?
Sydney, and. Motion is from the A.
And we're, if that's, if that's the board's feeling, then we will happily revise the, uh, revise the plan and propose, uh, access to the easement.
Can I just say something? So I told him to stay away from the easement, because we were trying to make it, we don't, we don't want to disturb anybody. We're trying to make this as easy as possible. Because when we originally bought the property, we saw the easement, and we had bigger plans for it. But once we found out the issues with the, we said.
Anybody you guys just the.
There's, there's somebody's yard.
It's our, it's our backyard.
It goes through their yard. If you look through here, this is where. It goes right through somebody's yard. So we're trying to avoid that.
Our clear point being with John, like the left. Even though.
You're aware, worse things are gonna happen in that easement than a driveway. I will say that.
Well, we, we took it as, we're, we just want to keep everyone happy, we don't want to make neighbors mad, we're not trying to drive through somebody's yard because there's an easement. So this was the easiest option around that, was the 10 foot driveway.
I mean, and then, conversely too, there are a number of properties that have long frontages, flag lots in throughout the community that don't have fire department turnaround access. If that is something that is.
Not 10 feet back.
Right, yeah, I mean, we, we have adequate room to be able to put that in, we were trying to reduce the impervious coverage. I mean, once we get through that 10 foot flag portion, we could expand it out and then provide a turnaround too. That's acceptable to the fire department.
Then that's always the focus, sometimes we're. I'll make that very close by Dan. Second bike is just a small fade line. Is there anyone who's thinking about like, here, the bar, the application, some please come to.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. Yes.
Name and address?
Tina Cosfeld, I live at 130 Whitetail Pass, Franklinville, New Jersey. Good evening, my name is Tina Cosfeld. I'm here on behalf of my husband and myself, who unfortunately, my husband is away on business, but he really, uh, would have liked to have been here. We reside at 130 Whitetail Pass, and we were surprised to receive notice only about two weeks prior, about the proposed dwelling directly behind our homes. Several families, unfortunately, although we, there are many that turned out this evening, but there are some others that, given the short notice, were not able to attend. A proposal to be built on this lot had been made some time ago, and we, uh, were under the impression that it was declined at that time, or we appreciate your, um, uh, going further into the history on that. The consideration for dwellings behind the homes of Whitetail Pass, Main Road and Lewis Court presents a substantial, uh, detriment to the public good. As a result, my husband and I are opposed to this consideration, given the following issues. Number one, the township currently requires a variance of a minimum of 150, 50 foot frontage, and only 10 feet is proposed. This substantially impairs the intent, purpose of the zoning planning ordinance, given all the surrounding homes conform with such frontage. This application for relief runs in direct contrast to the code enforcement and land development article, chapter 253 posted on our township's website. 16 years ago, we purchased, um, a lot and a home in Deer Meadows Development with the intention of raising three wonderful children in a development that balanced community and nature with the tree line behind our home and surrounding our development. We very much enjoy the privacy of these mature trees behind our home, and the decision will have a direct impact on our daily lives and will ultimately have a negative impact on our home values. Number three, drainage is already an issue in our development. Portions of the woods flood with any substantial rain, especially at the end of our development, which is where we live. As a result, many of the oaks, as well as other species, have died or are dying. The introduction of several cleared lots or a lot, as, um, was discussed earlier, as well as a driveway servicing these new homes will further exacerbate the issue, providing a pathway for water to the west side of the development. Already, many of our sump pumps run overtime to keep up with the improper grading in this development from day one. And finally, number four, currently, there is an easement restricting any permanent structure within the last 100 feet of our properties. Additionally, the last 60 feet is identified as a conservation easement restricting any disturbance. How is it possible to approve the building of these homes, or a home, and a driveway immediately adjacent to these restricted areas that we all have? We are respectfully requesting this board decline the variance relief requested. If consideration is to be given, all residents who reside on Lewis, Main and Whitetail Pass should, uh, require additional time to understand our rights, given such short notice. The decision of the zoning board will then dictate these families' next steps in securing appropriate representation in this matter. Thank you.
Appreciate them.
Yes, I do.
Name and address?
Yes, my name is Scott Stensman, property 2659 Main Road, Franklinville, New Jersey, 54 on the map, as you're looking at it. The easement goes through our backyard and into our area of 50 feet. We have a water system that's been set up before we moved into the house. We moved in a house in 2014. Our house, when we first moved in, was, was rundown, was sitting for three years, the door was kicked in, or our garage was leaking. We had to put a lot of money into our property and our house to get it approved, so we could move in with me and my wife and our, our, our children. Our grandchildren play back there. We also have, we also have animals. And to go back there and to take that 50 foot away from us, you're taking a lot of property, you're considering, I'm paying taxes on 1.89 acres. And that easement was supposed to be only for, for, uh, go, going, going back there for the, um, uh, electricity. Now you're telling me to use up my easement going through our property that we pay for? I find that very unacceptable. Because the fact is, I'd have to move a lot of stuff out of that area into, into my area, which I'm still paying for taxes of 1.89 acres, which is the whole property of that. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Good evening.
Sure, talk, uh, customer.
I do.
Name and address?
Kimberly Henson, 2635 Main Road, Franklinville. My name is Kimberly Henson, my husband Kevin, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, he's, um, coming home from work. I, um, we own the property at 2635 Main Road, and I am here tonight along with many of my neighbors to express our strong opposition to the variance application submitted by ARCR builders, who are requesting variance relief for the minimum lot footage for Block 5707, Lot 55, also known as Zero Main Road, Franklinville, New Jersey. The application submitted seeks one variance that if granted would significantly negatively impact the surrounding area and residents in the following ways. Traffic and public safety and community welfare, the primary responsibility of the zoning board is to protect the health, safety and welfare of this community. The requested variance was, would result in increased traffic congestion and potential safety hazards for those who reside between and around Clark Avenue, Main Road, Whitetail Pass, Whitetail Pass and Lewis Court. Additionally, the additional burden, the specific location on Main Road is well traveled area, not equipped to handle the additional burden that this project would impose. In addition to the current road instruction, at the intersection of Main Road and Route 40, construction in this area will increase and will elevate the risk of accidents imposing the threat to pedestrians, cyclists and drivers alike. Um, I actually reached out to the Malaga Fire Company this afternoon and asked if, um, what the required space would be for one of their fire trucks to go down. They prefer that the, uh, road be at least 10 feet, is what I was told. And their trucks are at least 10 feet as well. The neighbors. The neighbors and Main Road character, our community has a unique charm that is preserved through adherence through zoning regulations. Their proposed change would likely lead to overdevelopment disrupting the harmony and visual appeal of our area. If the variance is granted, is there anything preventing ARCR builders from submitting a new proposal plan and further subdividing the 12-acre lot? Then I have the environmental impact for residents and wildlife. The residents, the requested variance has significant environmental implications. The proposed development would negatively impact local ecosystems and the beautiful green spaces. Specifically, I have concerns about increased water runoff and how that will affect existing foundations, grading plans and groundwater balance in general. I am also curious if any research has been conducted or any consideration given into the regards to the possible effects of our native flora and fauna in the area. Per my land survey, our master bedroom is 37.84 feet from our property line. Is there a possibility for potential damage to existing foundations by disturbing ground so close by? Has a water runoff plan been submitted by ARCR builders and is that plan currently available at the, at the township for public review? Will heavy construction jeopardize existing septic and well systems? Community input, after speaking with and hearing from many of our concerned neighbors who are also here tonight, many are not, regarding this proposed application, I am confident in standing here tonight saying that granting this variance does not reflect the desires of the surrounding neighbors who live within 200 square feet of this property. I strongly urge the board to consider these factors and deny the variance application for Zero Main Road Franklinville, block 5707, with, lot 55, excuse me. But we, with several of our wonderful neighbors, believe it's imperative to keep the environment and the safety of our citizens at the forefront of our minds with all new ideas that come to light. We encourage everyone on the township board to fully consider all the ways this variance could impact the area and your neighbors who are here in the same room with you tonight. Thank you for your time. Kimberly Henson, your neighbor and proud, proud owner of 2635 Main Road, Franklinville.
Do you arrive along the eighth?
Yes.
Okay, you're adjacent with the eighth, go wide.
Uh, yes, I'm, yeah, in between the variance requested, there's the Whitetail Pass, the variance and then my property. Yep. And we have a six-foot fence that is only on the back portion of the property. We have no fencing on the front porch, front portion, excuse me. Sorry, I'm very nervous. Thank you.
Here.
Hello.
Please, sure, tell truth, that's the question.
Yes.
Name and address?
Karen Nicodemus, 2659 Main Road. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me, but I have questions. So our home, 2659, is, that 50-foot easement, our home faces sideways. I don't seem familiar with the house. So that easement, our, is directly in front of my home. I've watched six grandbabies that are out there running around and we've had an issue with the prior owner of our home who came to us asking if we would want to purchase the land behind this. We're going back probably over three years ago, they started. We didn't want to purchase the land, we were happy with where we're at. We love, you know, our area and didn't need any further land. With that, I did go to the township because at one point he was driving his car through my back property, my grandkids were running around the yard and he was driving into the woods. So I called the township, came up here and spoke to them personally. I was told that 50-foot easement was my property, that he could not access it to build a fence to block him from driving back there. So I'm confused as to why they're saying that that is accessible, why that is his property because that's, I was told here, right in the building, by the township. But we love Franklinville Township, we love the peacefulness. Again, the water issue is a concern, we have it in our backyard too. That's all they have to say. You're welcome.
Anyone else like here?
I am. Oh.
Tell truth, that's the question.
I do.
Name and address?
Tararoids, 2647 Main Road, Franklinville, New Jersey, on the middle rancher property. I do want to say that I did pick up my certified letter because I think it was stated that no one picked up their certified letters earlier. I did pick up my certified letter, I have it with me. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I picked mine up there. I know, I was really super good friends with the people who used to live in Kim's house, the rancher right there, and they passed along the information to me that in late 2006, early 2007, Scott Fumo and Frank Fumo came to the zoning board about that access area. I came here Wednesday and I spoke with Christina and I looked at the plans and the plans that I saw, there was 10-foot at the front and then eight-foot going across there on Wednesday. And now they're saying it's 10-foot? So I'm confused about that part of it and she was going to check into that. But that access there was previously denied for the same variance that they're requesting today. And I don't know if it was denied before, if it still stands.
This is where any. But your first four year. May I speak to that?
Sure, Jim. So they were proposing the three lots, they were going to sub. The previous proposal, because there was a map that was provided and that's what was referenced in the deed that has the access easement, they were proposing to put three houses back there and subdivide that property three ways because there's actually enough property to put about six homes back there if there was a substantial frontage. So as, you know, Scott had indicated, we were just proposing one, so this is a different application.
So that application never.
I believe it was denied. I believe it was denied. They were going to come in through the 50-foot access easement and put three lots back there too, which would not have frontage and one would have the 10-foot of frontage. But that is a totally different application.
So it was just the, the same variance issue from my understanding is what, you know, I was aware of, but that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? I try and please, as sure as I'll turn it up, ask while you could.
Yep. Jessica Slate's, 111 Lewis Court, Franklinville, New Jersey. Again, I wasn't really planning to speak, but again, after hearing my neighbors and the concern, I have lived in this neighborhood since Salmar Case drove my husband down it 20 years ago. We picked out our lot, we bought here, not in Washington Township, because I didn't want to live on top of neighbors. So we bought here with the intention and have had for many years wooded acre lot. With the proposal being put together, it does lead me to believe that if the variance from 150 to 10 feet is granted, that this company could subdivide that property and to put in a subdivision of not just two and three, but possibly more with 12 acres of lot, if that variance is brought down to 10 feet. So I guess that's my concern and with the concern of the houses that run on Lewis Court whose property would back up to the other side of this proposed area. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else from Harvard? I make my deal with it. Well, you can, sections, I could. So in favor, I, I propose. You guys, yeah. Really, I didn't say.
Yeah, I would just like to point out the fact that Lewis Court and Whitetail Pass were vacant lands at one point. They were planned developments with streets and substantial impervious coverage. So the same opposition that the people that live there that are presenting might have been presented back when those developments were first created. I mean, there has to be 30 to 40 homes back there and we're proposing one home. We're not trying to take advantage of the situation, we're not proposing three, we're not proposing seven, we just want to do one home that's centrally located. So we provide the maximum amount of buffering and we're not completely clearing that lot. We would just clear what's required around that home. So all that buffering would still apply. And as the one resident indicated, there's a 60-foot conservation easement along them, so they still have trees along their property and then there's 100-foot of building restriction. Again, we're not trying to take advantage of the situation, we're trying to adequately develop, develop a vacant piece of land in accordance with the municipal land use laws and that's, that's it.
Mr. Grabber, I think at this point, I've.
We're just.
Significant amount from the public, I, I think that we would request to table this hearing until, until we can determine whether there's another adequate means of accessing the property.
Another option, I really do. So you have to reset that?
We're submitting a new application.
Or revised?
Or revised application.
Okay, so hang on, how soon do you do that? Wouldn't let this sit for.
No, we're not going to let it sit.
So if you do something in the next couple of months, we can do revision, as so, we're very accepted revised documents. If it's a different application, you got to do revise that.
Yeah.
Do revise.
Yeah, we have to, we have to determine if there's another, another alternative that's more accommodating and, and maybe, maybe we'll communicate with you, we'll, we'll discuss with you before we.
So they would probably just deny this one without prejudice and then show your table in the application.
We would like to table, do you want your application? Yes. Yeah, we'd like to table the application, I think we're talking about.
So you're tabling and then you're waiting anytime, time limit, put it aboard to act?
Yes.
And per stand, if we don't hear some other modified application, whether there is clear of the time, they will, one evening, probably just deny it, got prejudice, we're denying it.
I'm, I'm sure we will be in touch with you before the, within two months or so.
Okay. Okay, so for the public, then the applicant is, is tabling their application. If they come back with another plan, hopefully that the, you, people all like. Would require.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll renotice everything. Yeah, we will certainly submit, renotice.
Where else will they access? Like there are, like there are passes around that, in time of lockdown, so where other, what other access point would there?
And they're engineers to the month. Right now, they're not going to, they're not going to. We're just trying.
Why? Thank you.
Are we good? All right, thank you.
2410 was taken. All right, next on the agenda, CB 20, oh no. CB 2413, Paul Bird. Mike, are they going to hold birds up? Yes, that is this. Your report. That's showing I. Yes, if I, well, this. That really. Scott. Okay. Why is this? Wait, we want to see our. Ice. Wait, definitely. So I'm saying, what is it? What? Great, one reset. Just.
Good afternoon.
I'm still like. Florence. The word. God, this is, at least, I mean, like the bells. But that's, that's. I know why. The amount where they don't hatch it. Three names or. They revise. Great thing. So. Looking. It's got all these ones. That's okay. Left box. Actually, they don't. They not getting so loud and feeding it. So that. Please. Yeah, but I think. See, I don't use them. It's it. Hurt that. I mean, I know, so I've. All right, Mike, are they going to want it? For, for. Yes. I don't see that. You are supposed to do that too? Thank you. This is my application.
Yes.
Name and address?
Paul Burgess, 378 Proposed Avenue, Franklinville, New Jersey. This is my wife, Stephanie.
Yeah, Stephanie Kennedy, 378 Proposed Avenue, Franklinville, New Jersey.
Not sure how this is supposed to, you know. I'd like to, I propose to build a 30 by 60 garage on my property instead of the standard 30 by 40 because it's just not big enough for me. And then.
And you're going to walk through that?
Start my. Yes, sir. I've got skid steers, lawnmowers, you know, I own almost five acres. I'm 510 feet from the road. You know, I'm all the way back in the woods and I guess I got to get it advanced because I'm past my house and I'm like, I'm not in the front yard, it's to the side.
I think you get the variant could be your square foot. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Also. It's also front yard. So technically, the pole barn that is, the garage that is proposed is in front of the house. A portion of it is in front of the house. Right, so pole barns are only allowed in the side yard and the rear yard.
Well, it's all due respect.
Technically, you, so it is, it is forward of the house.
Yes, forward of the house, but it's not in front of my house is to this.
The portion of it is in front of your house.
No, none of it.
Or was it the line of.
At her house.
Probably that line. And the other thing is garage area. The maximum permitted detached garage area is 1,200 square feet per our ordinance and the applicant is proposing 1,800 square feet. The other question we had in our review letter was what is the height of the garage? The maximum permitted height is 15 feet. The plans as presented did not identify the height.
I think it's going to be 16 feet because I like to have a 13 or 14-foot door on one side, so I can allow for ventilation, open the door up. Oh, my fifth wheel camper, that pull it in. I have a fifth wheel camper. That I could park inside my garage too. But I got the setbacks, I got the.
So you're, I'm sorry, let me stop there. So the height is 16 feet you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
16 feet. That was side over, he was saying 14-foot overhead door.
I'm sorry?
14-foot high on your overhead door?
Yes, sir. But my camper's 13.6.
Name and address, that way you can make that work. So building height is measured between eve and the ridge halfway in between. It's not to the ridge height. That's just unfortunately the way the state has determined how height is.
Very confusing.
So.
Overall building height isn't beautiful.
Right.
It's not at the top.
It's halfway between the ridge and the eve. So if he's got 14-foot doors and he's a 312 pitch on the roof, I calculated the height to be 15 feet, 10 and a half inches. He says 16 feet, which makes sense. So the variance requested tonight is for a 16-feet height where 15 feet is allowed. So those that are variances that, that are asked were to know. A structure partially in the front yard, size of a pole barn and height of the pole Now, this is in a RA zone, the minimum lot size is 1.5 acres, the applicant has 4.8 acres, almost 5 acres. So it's an oversized lot in the zone. Well, shortly, you won't need. For that, that amount of acres, I think they're changing the ordinance to, you won't need it for size. If you have. That's why I didn't. Yeah. Click, and work you will meant. Thanks. In the community, you won't need a variance, but that doesn't mean anything right now because right now you're deep. Okay. All right, anyone else, hey guys, any questions? Do you have any? I don't have any questions. It's old enough to the public, the public like. Let me make a bunch of them, they're the best public. So section by Joe Prince, you all favor, I, I. Anyone for the public like you're. We're going this application. If you about their benefit. In the cap. Your test. Right here. This is where just to get. Brings. Raise your hand, please. Swear to tell truth, this one you're going to get.
Yes.
This may happen.
Paula Pilatski, 365 Proposed Avenue. Okay, we live, like, the road's not that big because it's a dead-end road. So we live like across and over. What is going to be in this building because there's so much noise over there, we hear all the time. It's a quiet neighborhood, we have kids, we have animals, we want to be safe and secure for our families. That's my concern because we have a dog that goes fast, which he hears the noises of the cars up and down. They're going to cause any more traffic. It's a dead end.
I think, I think he says that he has a camper station, but.
You could park a camper. Yeah. Isn't it that kind of big for a building?
If you want to speak in.
Okay. I mean, we just, 30 by 60, that's pretty big, isn't it?
So I mean, but he's like, it's big, it's big.
would obey the speed limit.
Exactly, indeed, Joe, what you're going to do with yours, the hose.
To put my cars and my skid.
And a microphone too.
To put my cars and my skid steer, my lawnmowers, in my garage instead of having them all over in the weather. And what traffic is, what traffic?
We get traffic, and we get people to come down there fast. I mean, we hear your cars up and down the road all the time, up and down the drive, which is okay, but.
What cars, man? I work in New York City during the week.
Okay, the little, okay, there's several, like, come up and down. And it's like, we have, we have deer out there that are running right now. You can't go over.
Yeah, I feed them. I know all about it.
Okay, but how about when I believe this, when you come down proposed, you have a stop street, and then it's a lower, lower speed zone?
Man, the speed limit down there is 35 mile an hour. I did not make that. Anybody that travels up and down that highway does 35 mile an hour. I don't. My son don't. I know she don't.
I think if you have a problem with that, you should be calling the police department.
Okay. I guess the question, Emmy, is a good question. Will this pole barn generate any additional traffic? Is anything that you're doing there going to generate additional traffic?
No.
Not usually for commercial uses?
No.
People aren't coming to hang out there and be there for any reason? You're just storing your own equipment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But like I say, you know, traffic, what traffic? I got a 510-foot driveway. I pull into my driveway, there's no other traffic.
And we're on a hill as well, so everything does echo because we are on a hill, yeah.
Do you hear my skid steer running when I'm out there working my property?
Yes. We hear the machines out there cutting the trees down and stuff.
I do, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it like, it was quiet. It was very, very quiet.
You, you can't have a good property if you don't maintain your trees. If you have dead forage.
I understand, and I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. I'm just concerned about traffic.
I understand your, a color.
Okay.
Anyone else like to hear? Not to disturb much. I make the most of the call. Most of the day in the center, second by.
Sure, second by.
All favor, I.
Mr. Burgess, how far, I don't see it on the time that I have here. Approximately how far back is the pole barn thing on the road?
510 feet.
It's ours.
It's bigger than Eric.
530 feet. It's primarily a wooded lot, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's my only question. Thank you.
And like she said, yeah, I was clearing my property. I was clearing out all the dead trees. That's a fire hazard, so. A good, healthy forest, you got to maintain it.
Yeah. Nothing further, Chairman. Hey, you're investigating. I make my leave through the drive, the very required. Mr. DeSasri?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannell?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Chairman Greigner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What just happened?
They hit the.
We're good?
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is paper, he's.
You got to go and get down all.
All is a shame.
I'm sorry.
All the Dublin.
All right, thanks. I got.
That is.
See, we all.
Good night.
All right, resolutions?
And I guess you do know the lay-in here.
Yeah, we have the three resolutions from two months ago. The Maryland is showing card, the other ARCR, the builders LLC, and for this to a gray pack.
Well, I got the statement from my, so I split. I make the vote, you have to go all three, right? Second, the motion to, to be handled, the resolution. All in favor, I proposing one, that's your last. Secretary is at work.
There is some.
Okay. Mike, next to that. John, this one is to Chris, they talked about how we're getting the information for the board members. Oh, yes, Chrissy. That drop elements, drop box, drop box, we need to get another way to get it to the board. That thing is difficult to, to, I know Andy says it, I have to tell him, because I have a tremendous amount of trouble getting information off that and navigating through it.
Do you have any other questions?
I mean, everyone's. They email to us, PPS.
So the administrator asked for to be drop box because people had been sharing.
The administrator may want that, but if we don't, if we can't get the information on there, what good is it doing us?
I don't disagree.
There has to be another way to get us the plans. I receive plans every day. Email to me. All right, how about some? Out of the house, great.
However you guys suggest.
Well, we're going to find out. We're going to ask the mayor. All those here, you trained, John. I mean, that drop box, I could do it, John, so I'd like to see that. Listen, why you think I'm here, Zane? I mean, I, I know I'm not the only one with word to ask questions, so. How about we try the training first and see if there's some police there help you along the down and. That's what everybody's using, planning to do at the same time. How they, how's it working out for them? I would rate the play check. I guess go into Ralph. Ralph. Ralph, he's not, because I have. He's never said anything. All right. I think that's it. We'll have, you'll schedule our training, Chrissy. I guess.
Can I ask this question? I got a certified note, Leonard, about an addition to a home on 862 Salem Avenue, and it said it was tonight, August 6th, at 7:00 PM.
Salem Avenue would be.
That is on the issue?
Is that Angela's?
That's Angela.
Oh, thank you. Angela's did not give proper notice. I know you got notice, but it not overall give proper notice. So they're going to have to redo their notice and be back next month. Anyone on that that got notice, they'll be heard on September 3rd. Are they renoticing? They're not renoticing everybody. They're renoticing the.
Well, that's not fair. Hold on, you guys, you guys, this is my first time here, gentlemen.
Unless they, no one thinks it's going to create confusion, then we'll have a renotice every. I think they should renotice. Just make it see if they let them renotice, okay?
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry, I hope I'm not.
We don't have a public portion here, just saying.
Goodbye.
Okay, there's one question? You can, but we don't have a public portion.
I'm just curious how the system works, because there's gentleman earlier with the RC, that, that developing group, they actually specifically said they didn't want to hold off, they wanted to approach you gentlemen tonight, and then all of a sudden, when they got a no and all these objections, all of a sudden, they said they're going to table and leave. Is that?